Curtis, how are we?
No.
Looks like we're good to go. It is six o'clock. So I'd like to call our meeting in order if we could, please.
I have a motion.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Support.
Support.
Motion support. Last chance. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We have an agenda. Roll is completed.
It is.
And Roxanne and Danny are excused this evening, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, next up is pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the agenda will allow, to review the proposed fiscal year 2025 annual city budget and related property tax millage rates.
Move to open the hearing.
Support.
Motion support. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We have a hearing.
Yes.
You're the lead.
In your agenda, we have the resolution of support for all the different revenues and funds for the year. The total, this is all general fund revenue. We're at $6,050,000 with all our, with taxes, licenses, intergovernmental revenue, internal service charges. Those are charges that are internal from one department to another. Fines and forfeitures, rents, investment income, and other revenue. Underneath the general fund portion of it, broken out the funds, and we are balanced currently with revenues to expenditures in community development, which includes economic development, downtown maintenance, planning and zoning, community safety, which is the police contribution to the fire board, and the public safety inspection services, which that's coenforcement. Property maintenance function, buildings and grounds, Riverside Cemetery. Transportation function, that is our sidewalk replacement program. That is basically 50-50. We set aside 50% of the funds to do sidewalks in a particular section of the community, and then the property owners are assessed 50% of the change out of those sidewalks. Non-Act 51 Public Works Funds, street lighting, and that is the power bill for the street lights across the city. Recreation, culture, and the culture, recreation, culture parks, and the contribution to the Amel Public Library. At $100,000 this year, that's been consistent for the last three budget seasons. Two budget seasons, I'm sorry, two budget seasons. Also included with that is the paid for with the County Way Millage and a, just almost a one mill levy across the city for operations out of the general fund. It's $100,000. The executive administration functions, city commission, city manager, city clerk. Information technologies, that is basically all our capital for the computer system servers. Anything else along those lines, plus our contract with VC3 and any other vendors that we bring in to work on different things in the system. We have not hired, as a commissioner was hired, an IT person. Just not in the budget to do that. So we've been working with VC3 and our staff to get us through. And so we're doing very, actually very well. We did have an email from VC3 here just recently. So every now and again, they do send out a phishing expedition to see, you know, who will click on things and that sort of thing. I'm happy to report that they, all our staff did not engage in those.
100%.
100%.
That is good. You don't get that from experience. That's really important.
No clicking through. So, which is, they were quite pleased with that. So, and so was I. So that means people are reading and looking for those little make-believe email subject headings, so.
Those can be very costly.
Yes, yes.
Now, if we could only get all the senior citizens.
But so far, you know, everyone's taking the security of the system very seriously, and that, you know, did prove that when I received that email here this last week. Discretionary presented component events, the Downtown Development Authority and the Amel Public Library that we mentioned, that's the County Way Millage, and the Downtown Development Authority is a levy across just the downtown. And then all our capital improvements broken out through all the different departments, including all of our drinking water projects that we've been talking about here for the Clean Water SRF. Also included there is the wastewater treatment plant, not the treatment plant, but the distribution system of the treatment plant. Maybe the left, the big one that you'll see there is lift station number 16 that we've been talking about for quite some time. That is programmed into this year's budget at 1.5 million to replace. And then all along through there, the neighborhood street replacements, water replacements, those are all part of the SRF. And then some limited replacements for the Public Works Department with the leaseback replacement, flat truck replacement that will be dealing with on this agenda, plus the upcoming agenda to replace some trucks that are coming to the end of their life. And then some mowing decks. Lots of projects.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
You mentioned the mowing decks.
Yeah.
We used to lease mowers from John Deere, I guess, right?
Those.
We've done that in over the years, haven't we?
They're the smaller types of mowing.
Little makers?
Yeah, these are more of the Ferris, the large ones that you see, zero turns and that sort of thing. That's these particular ones. The John Deeres are more of the riding lawn, more of the tractor, yeah, the tractors. That we do the basic mowing, say, at the wastewater treatment plant or the water plant, those, what we use for those or.
Do we still lease those other ones? Do we still?
Yeah, we own the decks. And then we have a lease agreement with the John Deeres. Here, as mentioned, for the smaller ones, the cemetery equipment, that's a lease, but we own the decks on those. But we lease the lawn mowers. The big ones, like the Ferrises that we do in the big parks, things like that, those we already purchase.
That still makes sense to lease those things?
For the time being, yeah, the smaller ones. We can't get a decent price on the bigger ones.
Correct. Every two years, return, you get a new lawnmower out of it.
Okay. Just curious on where that program was. Thank you.
But all in all, we are balanced. Revenues, expenditures, a lot of projects are going to be happening. We do go off a bid here next week, David, for all our.
24th. 24th. I think it was all for bid for.
Yes, we'll all for bid for our SRF projects. So that'll be very busy here. Not necessarily this construction season, but the following two will be major.
They will go off a few weeks later. That's still the caveat, because that's our final funding. So we're going to start the walk on 24th.
Okay, who has the first question?
I just have a question on the capital projects. There seems to be a lot of these projects on deck for '24, '25. Is that feasible? Can we really do all of this stuff within the next year or so?
Well, we have to have them programmed in.
Okay.
Because they will get started in the 24, '25.
Get started in, okay.
Yeah, they will get started, so.
It just seems like an awful lot of stuff.
No, no, it's not going to get done. It's going to be carryover, but we have to have them programmed in and budgeted for.
That's part of the funding requirement.
Yeah. So it's all there. As we spend down, it will carry over to the next fiscal year. So we'll be seeing that this next year, too.
Okay.
Carryover.
Yeah, the funds designated that you're going to use them. Always a loser.
That's right.
Okay.
When it comes to specific street reconstructions, then here, there's no real telling on when we would get to a specific one.
Not at this moment, no, but they will be done in this timetable of this SRF program. And the reason for that is the SRF is paying for all the water main replacements underneath those neighborhood streets. That's how we're funding those.
Okay.
That's a six, as you know, that was voted on for a six-year time period, and it's going to be done basically in a two-year time period. So we'll have like two and a half years left on that six-year millage that folks are either one way, they're going to say, gosh, how come you're not doing more work?
Right. You were doing great for a while. We spent the money.
You know, and like David has warned, you know, when we get bids in, this will be the telling sign of, you know, how it all pans out.
We will have one left to do for the millage, so it'll be kind of one year carryover, because Riverside's not a part of the SRF, but that's the only one that'll be done that's not a part of the SRF project. Sorry.
And that's just a mill research.
It's the case of what we saw on Michigan.
Okay. Thank you.
There's going to be a lot of detouring and things like that coming up.
Anybody else? Okay, we are a public hearing, so are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission on its topic?
I'm going to hear it plus.
I just got back. Apparently not.
You are the public.
Okay, well, with that, will entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Support.
Support.
Motion support. Last chance for comments, questions. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. Thank you. Next, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the agenda will allow, to consider a special assessment roll for unpaid charges for 2023, including charges for noxious weed cutting, sidewalk replacement, frozen meters, sanitary service leads, rental license fees, improper parking, and securing unsafe property.
Move to open the public hearing. Support.
Motion support. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we have a hearing.
Yes, this is our annual tallying of things that haven't been paid yet that need to be caught up. What is different this year, as we did pass the ordinance to go back on code enforcement type fines that haven't been paid. So that's why this year you see, not just for noxious weeds, but also the rental license fees. Believe it or not, we have a backlog of folks who have not paid their rental license fees. So that will be a major income revenue coming into code enforcement. The civil infractions that are for improper parking and anything dealing with code enforcement, securing unsafe properties, those are, that one's specific to the eastward property for that unsecured property. We did pay for that out of the general fund, and that will be rolled onto the taxes here. So that, that's some good news, especially from the, from what Mike has told me from the rental license point of view. That will be a substantial, you know, you're talking over almost $15,000 worth of rental fees over the last few years. So that will be rolled onto there, so. With that. Any questions?
I assume, you know, those fees, people have had multiple notices.
Yes. Oh, yes. So, yeah, and those, especially the rental license fees, we're following up them to actually get into the homes to look at them. So they're receiving, you know, knocks on the doors, those sort of things.
I guess maybe if this doesn't solve that, maybe those, do those fees escalate?
At this point, they do not. It's, each year, it's a $40 fee for a single-family residence, $8 per unit after that. So that's kind of how, you know, the fee schedule explodes at this point, so. And we don't have any. At the time being, there's been no late fee attached to it or anything like that. So when we pass this ordinance to, you know, put these types of things on the property taxes, we hope that will incentivize folks to pay their.
Well, we may want to put some kind of penalty in there, too, so that, I mean, because it's extra work tracking these people down. It's extra work to put all this stuff on the rules. It's extra work to do all this. Seems like there ought to be some kind of a stick to incentivize people. It's like with the mowing the lawns, you know? It's not that we want the money, but, boy, just do it.
And we do. That was, according to ordinance, yeah. That was definitely to begin the ordinance to charge that service fee that covers our backside, and then to charge whatever the square foot cost is for the mower to come out and do that. They get charged for both items, so that gets ruled onto here.
And if these people, I mean, if people aren't paying attention to them, then, you know, you gotta do something.
But, no, that wouldn't hurt. Maybe that would help, you know, incentivize again, folks to pay on time and get it in. It's a substantial amount.
Yeah, I didn't even realize it was that large.
Yes, and it's over not just one year. This is, according to ordinance, we were able to go back and pick that up for a few, you know, a couple of years, so. Hopefully, this will, like I said, this, we'll look at also what we can charge for an additional fee, for like a late fee or something to add with it. Maybe that will help also, but now that folks may see that it's real, that we will, you know, we will attach it to your property taxes and get it that way, that they'll pay for it.
And we're talking about the rental licenses especially. I know we talked, I don't know if you ever implemented a multi-year, like if you've got good lingers, consistently you could get inspections, pay their fees at time, go into a multi-year inspection or a two or three-year timeframe between inspections. Have we ever instituted any?
We have not instituted it. We've, I've discussed that with the code enforcement.
We've addressed it a couple of times.
Yes, and I have discussed it with the code enforcement officer recently. He doesn't feel comfortable doing it at this point, but just for the tracking standpoint, this, you know, kind of the tracking thing's probably going to be the most difficult. Who's, who was going to be on that list of every other year inspection, that sort of thing. So anyway, we're making progress with getting these back fees, getting into homes, getting some other properties taken care of.
Oh, it's expensive to run the program.
It is.
It really is.
I could use, you know, a part-time person just to do rental inspection. I mean, if you're going to do.
You mean another one?
Yeah, 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 on top of what you currently do, because Mike's doing rental inspection, some fire inspections when they come up, code enforcement, and then there's a fire call. These out, you know, on the fire call.
That's okay.
But at this point, maybe, you know, we get enough fees in, and then maybe I could hire someone part-time to help out with supplementing those, both items. But at this point.
In terms of individuals here that may have moved out of the city, is there recourse or anything, any next steps that we can?
This is going on the tax roll.
Yes, going on the real property.
Okay.
Yeah. This is going on the real property, you know? That's what's a bummer for some landlords. It's that a tenant just breaks up a water bill and they leave. It's on the landlord to pay for the, pay for that water.
So it stays with the property?
Yes.
So as a landlord, it's probably in your interest to pay the bill and just include in the rent some of it.
Yeah, some amount, yeah.
Make sure that you're taking a chance, you know?
And that's, that's usually where we get our largest complaints, you know, from that standpoint is, yeah, you have a tenant that doesn't pay for three months, and if there's a leak, sometimes the tenants aren't really, because it's not their bill, so they're not paying attention to a leak, and that can happen very fast. You wouldn't, you wouldn't think a little trickle would add up, but it adds up very quickly.
Other questions or comments? Anything else? Any members of the public have any comments? Again, nothing? We're coming on you.
Support.
Okay. We had a motion to support to close the public hearing. Excuse me. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Hearing is closed. Thank you. Oh, we did. I apologize. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the April 9, 2024, regular, April 23, 2024, regular meeting and the April 9, 2024, closed session meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Support. Okay, motion support. Comments or questions? Everybody saw the closed sessions, right? Getting back to, okay? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Apologize for that. Moving on, request for purchase. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to America Tools in the amount of $11,983.21 for the purchase of a new sewer inspection camera for the Public Works Department. Move. Excuse me.
Support.
Motion support.
Time to replace our camera. It's done, right, Dave? It's not.
Almost 16 years old.
And we did actually get a decent number on this. It came in under budget what we had thought of it, so. Some actual positive on that.
Did they have TV 16 years ago?
Yep.
It was PHS.
We're just in live stream.
So this is, I think roughly the same amount we paid the firm to come and film a bunch of streets a couple of years ago, maybe?
That was, you know, when we had them come in and do the sewer lines for the park, or the parking lots, yes. It was about 13,000, $14,000 to come in and camera all those lines and provide a report and all those sort of things, yeah.
Yep. So will this replace the need to do that in the future?
It does to a certain extent. Even there, members way back in the stormwater diversion project where it did that, this is a small camera. Remember the Marriotta lottery? This was that camera. It's basically, the head's about inch and a half around in diameter. We use it to putt down into sanitary sewer laterals. We use it to put in sanitary mains occasionally. If we can see them, if the pipe's over 68 inches, we can't see enough simply because the camera's so small. It's a multi-use camera. We can put it in stormlines and trace where the lines go when we don't know where they go. Rough estimates of issues in sanitary sewer mains with it. But when it comes to sanitary sewers that are eight inches or bigger, we just can't do it. This also has a limit on the reach. We can only push this about 120 feet. Sometimes if this line is small enough, we can hook it to the sewer flusher truck and pull it in reverse and see things. But the project you're referring to is eight-inch sewers or above, which typically all the mains are eight-inch. And that's a crawler cam. It basically looks like a remote-controlled vehicle on tracks, and that sits up higher in the pipe and goes down the center. You can change the angles and that type of thing. So this has, if anybody's seen it or knows what we do with it, it's amazing how long they last because of what they go through in the situations that it gets put in. Camera itself still works, but the computer on it is what's failed. And to, you can't replace the computer. You have to replace the whole mechanism, so. It definitely pays for itself the amount of times that we do use it. We sometimes run into mystery laterals. We're doing street projects. We try to find out where they go. Roger was a recipient of that. We actually used it to go up that line that we found. We found out that where that line went up into his house. We did Harbor Street, so we can, we can view and we can trace with this.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Thank you, Dave.
Did we get a motion on this? I'm sorry. Do we have any motion? Anybody else have comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we're running a new camera. Thanks, Dave. Next, we have to consider a resolution to approve a request for purchase to D&amp;K Truck Company through the MyDeal State Contract in the amount of $87,554 for a new cabin chassis to replace unit 216. Your pleasure.
Go ahead. Move to adopt.
Support. Okay, we have motion support. In the background.
Yep, here's a, 216 is just getting to the, get to the end of its life cycle. These are the big blue trucks you see pushing snow and moving dirt here and there, and basically they're all-purpose vehicles. They're a little more expensive than they used to be because of the new standards for diesel engines, and it's just, here we are.
Any idea how old the one we're replacing is?
Twenty, probably 25-plus years old. 25, I was confident we'd say.
So we got our, got our time.
Does it have salvage value at all, or?
I'm getting to the point where suddenly still, I think of them being new, but they're not new. We put them out for sale. They go out for resale when we're done with them. So if we retire them, if they're of use, there are certain companies that'll use them, refurbish them for the types of uses. So, yeah, we do put them out. There's a company we deal with that deals with municipal and private auctions, and it goes up to a wide range throughout the United States, so. So we auction off the room.
All right. Other questions or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and you're buying a new truck. Next up, we're to consider a resolution to approve requests for purchase to Truck and Trailer Specialties, again through MyDeal State Contract in the amount of $26,879 for the purchase of a new flat rack box, flat rack box and hoist for the new cabin chassis replacing unit 216 that we just bought.
Move to adopt.
Support. Motion support. Pretty self-explanatory.
You need this to do its work. It needs this to do its, to do the work. You got the truck.
You're just missing the blade underneath that, you're outside, huh? Anybody have comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving right along. We're to consider a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Fenton Memorials in the amount of $53,000, $53,000 even for the construction of a 64-niche columbarium at Riverside Cemetery.
Move to adopt.
Support. Motion support.
Columbarium, we have one out at the cemetery that has filled up. We've been talking a lot about, and probably will be talking a lot about in the, here in the near future, about the cemetery future, about the cemetery and how to best provide services for those long-term. And the columbarium is a nice way to handle some of the idea of people using, going through cremation. We can put in, this like you mentioned in the title, this is a 64-niche columbarium. That means there's 64 individuals' ashes there. That does save us on 64 plots being, you know, going into the cemetery.
Much more efficient.
Much more efficient. We don't have the mowing. We don't have any of those things. It has become pretty popular. We've seen a lot of folks, especially during the COVID time, it picked up. And now it is full and we were pleased with the price that came back. We were anticipating that to be over $70,000 and it came back in at 53. For lack of a better term, this is more economical for us and for the individual that to have their ashes.
When's the last time we needed one? Any ideas?
The first one that was built was installed was '98 or '99. And it took a couple of years to catch on, but mid-2000s it started to pick up. And in the last eight to nine years, it's really picked up. And that's when it's sold.
And I think it's probably going to pick up from there because more people are choosing that option.
It's been a long time since we've had to put that in.
Yeah.
So what do we charge for a niche? Is that something we probably need to look at as well?
Yes, yes. Currently, what we're charging for residents is 300, non-residents 600. Curtis and his staff looked at some, just got some real quick numbers for us. At very least, charge 800 for residents and 1,200 for non-residents. This definitely would cover our cost for the installation of building on it and for some ongoing maintenance, but we might want to look at, maybe that should be a little bit higher too. But anyway, it does need to go up, but for something that's long-term, forever, we take care of it forever. And then not taking up an extra amount of space that it takes because really our cost for the maintenance of the cemetery to come in and the mowing and the string trimming is really our cost. I mean, this, you know, the flowers and things, the policies that we have are to hang off of the stone and things, so we don't have too much of those issues. Folks are pretty respectful of those requirements. It's really just getting out there with a string trimmer and trimming around all the headstones and other trees or whatever.
There's better ways to build things today that I think we really need to take a serious look at.
Have we ever considered a memorial garden similar to what we have at First Press? We have a columbarium there that maintenance is almost zero.
And that should be probably part of our overall offering to have out there. But, you know, this being, it's not cheap to build, you know, $53,000, but when you look at how much we thought it was going to cost to build, it is more of an economical way of handling it and folks are choosing this option more and more as we move forward.
And what's the cost of a plot, do you know? I mean, and this probably isn't, we're getting too in-depth probably for this conversation, but I guess the question for today is, you know, do we go ahead with this for now or do we wait and build a, develop a longer, larger plan with things like Roger's idea? Look at that and is an alternative to this perhaps?
I would think that this is needed now if we're full. And it holds how many?
64.
64, so that could be filled in.
And we haven't, like I said, these are just 800, 1,200, it's just some numbers to talk about. We, you know, we can get more in-depth about what it should be charged.
I think there is a need for this as well. It's a different, a whole different ballgame. And when you're buried in the ground as they are out at our, that's a one-square-foot plot that's opened with a shovel and it is simply, ashes are simply dumped into that plot. There's no burial, there's no urn, there's no anything that goes in. Ashes are just poured into the plot and it's closed. And if I wanted to be buried with my mother, we could reopen the same thing and my ashes could be put in with hers. There's no maintenance on it at all. But there are people who are still going to want there to be some kind of a physical thing, like, you know, the columbariums like this. I believe there is a place in there for an urn or whatever.
It's basically a little locker.
Yeah, it's a little locker. And this is just, this is a hole in the ground, really. It works.
You can actually hold up to two burials depending on the size of the urn. So there could be two in one niche.
Yeah.
So certainly more efficient and more, to me, it's more desirable than the full plots.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's crazy.
And just as a side note, we can get more into this as, you know.
We need a longer range plan.
Yeah, we need to talk about.
It's not just us. I had a small discussion after another meeting with a few of our neighboring townships and I didn't realize that most of our neighboring townships have more than one cemetery. And they are obviously just dealing with the exact same thing that we are dealing with. How do you do this?
Well, if you look up a vote when we talk about the budget, I mean, general fund, we're putting $300,000, $300,000 a year.
Into the cemetery.
Into the cemetery maintenance, which is 200,000 more than putting the whole library out of the general fund. That's an ongoing problem and it's going to get nothing but worse if we don't tame it.
It has more customers though.
Agreed.
Lot of them.
I think our priorities are misplaced sometimes.
Well, it's something that we need in the city. I mean, it's, you know, and it's.
And this does provide us a cheaper alternative for us as a city to maintain.
Yeah, definitely. So.
Makes sense to promote.
Yeah, I mean, it should make, not only economic sense to us, but the way we offer plots, the way we offer this versus the way we offer perhaps something like Roger was talking about or whatever options are out there, they need to make economic sense. What is more economical for us should be more economical for the consumer to purchase to encourage them to go this route or whatever route. So that would be my goal. So with that, any more comments or questions? Are we going to move ahead with this? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried and we're moving ahead. So thank you. Looking forward to more discussion about cemeteries. How about that? Moving down to recommendation on bids. First, we are to consider a resolution to receive bids and award a contract for the downtown parking lot number seven reconstruction project to the recommended bidder, also to approve the related requests for purchase and authorize the mayor to execute contract documents on behalf of the City of Alma. We received bids, let's see, two, three, four, five of them ranging from, what is it? 600 and 14,000? No, 526 up to 856,000 and some change. And the recommended bidder is Robin Hersh Excavating Incorporated Clear for 526,926.50, which is coincidentally the lowest bid.
Move to adopt.
Support. Motion support? Any more background on this or?
Well, just a.
Not a new project?
No, a new project and this will use up the rest of our RFP funds. So we have 340,000, just over 340,000 for this. If the commission does approve this, we will be back with some budget amendments for the revenue coming in and then an expenditure that will need of 186,000 and change in fund balance to cover the rest of the project. But that's what we've discussed here as a commission that use the fund balance toward capital projects. And this gets us one parking lot closer to having them all rehab in the downtown. So, and that does use up the rest of our RFP funds. And additional note, we were very surprised that we got five bids. So, and there, you know, three of them are here. Actually, four of them are pretty darned close together, so we know it's a good number that we're getting.
Did we use this company before? I can't remember.
Yeah, actually they're doing our.
This is big, but yeah, this one.
Okay.
They're doing our approaches out front here right now.
They also did the lot here next to the gas station, that parking lot.
That doesn't sound familiar, but we haven't used them until this one.
Seven is where?
It's behind the very front.
Okay, thank you.
Alley's and the parking lot.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Next, you are to consider a resolution to approve a proposal from VIA in the amount of $160,200 for dispatch software, which together with a three-year agreement for ongoing support, also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the mayor to execute the contract documents on behalf of the City of Alma. The following proposals received in response to requests, and it looks like we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of those, so it's very competitive. And it looks like they range from 97,000 up to 225, I believe is the highest. And your recommended bidder in this case is at 160, right?
Yes, correct.
And it's got some scores here, so you want to, I guess, let's look for a motion.
Move to adopt.
Support. Okay, we have motion support. More background I think is needed here, please.
Yep. As part of the bidding process with MDOT for this particular software, we discussed that this is the software where an individual will be able to have an app and be able to schedule rides, cancel rides, all those sorts of things from this, know where their bus is located. We have to come up with a scoring, a scoring procedure for the different proposals that came in. We did that. And then on top of that, and I can let Brad talk a little bit more about reaching out to the transit agencies that are using these particular softwares to kind of get their feeling and how they're actually functioning. Because we all know when it comes to software, it's only as good as it works with whoever's using it. So the higher score there really came about when we talked to the other entities or the transit agencies that are using it. And it isn't the highest bid, but it isn't the lowest bid. But we feel that for what we're needing, what we've been talking about doing, this is the software to go with. But I'll let Brad talk a little bit about that.
Sure. VIA was the only, out of the eight proposals, that could meet every criteria that we requested, which was the app that is a City of Alma app. They call it a white-label app, where the other ones had a gray label. So it would be Tripmaster app. So you'd have to find that app and it's just not as easy for our customers to be able to, I want to write Alma Transit. So Google, the Google Store or the Apple Store, Alma Transit, and our app is going to show up. So it's going to be very user-friendly, both for my staff and the customers. And when I did call around to the other agencies that are using the software, actually three of them had transferred from what we're currently using to this software. So they're very familiar with how to migrate the data. It's all going to be very seamless. So what kind of questions do you have for me?
So is, I guess the question in my mind is $60,000 justify not having or having a private label app?
Oh, that, well, I mean, if you're looking at the vendor second from the bottom, that vendor didn't even respond to most of the questions in the RFP. So, and the one municipality that uses them, it's just Saginaw Stars, if they try to get reporting done and they have to prod them just to get reports that they need for mandatory reporting to MDOT, so didn't score very high. They don't want to purchase a problem.
So it's not just that?
No, no. There were six different criteria. So absolutely, down here in the bottom, those six criteria were method of approach, prior experience, understanding the context and purpose, capability and qualifications, price and then ongoing price. So I mean, it was a, and each one of these proposals is like a phone book, so it was arduous to get through. But, and that's why the scoring, there's quite a sliding scale because based on the proposals and the criteria that we wanted to be met in these proposals, there's some of them that came up really short.
Okay.
It's just one little thing when you buy software, it's the cheapest one. And when we talk about this, because it is quite a difference in cost, we look at that. But hearing from Saginaw Stars, and that is a pretty large transit agency just near us, and their comment was, wasn't, if they could do it again, they wouldn't type those comments to us.
Did you do the scoring or was that you calling around to other townships doing the scoring?
Oh, no. Myself, my dispatch supervisor, Jay LaFalla, and I had Marilyn Carey, she did the financials because part of this was also the financial backgrounds for each one of these companies. We didn't want somebody that, you know, is financial unstable, where they're going to go out of business, they'll take your money and then go bankrupt and then you're just out. So, and then Eric also went through the proposals, so.
And the bid amounts, it says total bid amounts of $160,200 is, includes the three-year maintenance and everything.
Correct. Everything. Lock, stock, barrel, three years. Correct.
Yep. Anybody else have more questions?
No.
Okay, I believe we have a motion on the table, so no more questions. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Sure.
Resolutions. We are to consider a resolution ratifying the investment of the following city funds, which in this case is one CD for four months at 4.6%. Beth Huntington, your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support. Motion support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next up, consider a resolution to adopt an increase in water ready-to-serv and usage rates to become effective July 1, 2024. And the note states that the water rate, water rate unit charge per 1,000 gallons will increase by 12%. The water readiness to serve will increase by 10.50.
Move to adopt.
Support.
And this is part of our plan, five-year plan. This is our last big jump. In year two here, so I'm sure you may hear some grumblings. I know we will here at the S.A. Hall, but we did talk about doing it all at once last year or to try to phase it in over these two years. And these increases are paying for our bond that we, you know, for the SRF funding to pay for all those improvements that we are currently doing. So it isn't like we're just doing it just to hold on some cash. It's going to be come in and then go out for the projects that are there.
Good. More comments or questions? I think it would be nice, now that we've done this, and I assume St. Louis, Nethica, probably our neighboring communities are the same, so maybe just a down and dirty study comparison, just to see where we're at in relation to all of our neighbors. You know, just when we get the questions, it's nice to have some information ready that either, yeah, we realize we're, you know, 20% higher than everybody else or we're right in line with them or, you know, and the reasons for it are the projects we're doing, obviously. So appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll get that ready for your commission for next meeting.
Thank you. Great. And did I call for a vote on that one yet?
No.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Next up, to consider a resolution to adopt an increase in wastewater ready-to-serve rates become effective July 1, 2024. And this one rate charge will remain 3.90 per thousand gallon used, but the wastewater readiness to serve fee will increase by $7.50. Again, along with our plan, so.
Move to adopt.
Support. Anything else?
No, just along with the plan. And like I said, we tried to tier some things to kind of give a break on one particular fund of another. So, you know, next year you won't see these funds increasing as quickly. They will be some small increases in like yardage and things like that.
Were we at 3% for the remaining three years of this? 12, 12, and 3?
Yeah. Yeah. And those are just on the usage. It won't be on the ready-to-serve.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried. Next up, consider a resolution adopting an increase in the solid wastewater ready-to-serv rates from 2212 per residence to 2271 per residence to become effective with all solid waste bills nailed after July 1, 2024.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support.
It's just part of our plan and part of our contract with Granger, 5% increase for the five-year period. And that includes everyone once a week, 90 gallon trash, every other week for 90 gallon recycle, and then a large item pickup per week. Calling Granger to come pick it up. And always got to remind people to call Granger to have it picked up.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no.
No, staying.
Okay, and one abstention. But the motion has carried. Next, we are to consider a resolution approving a request for permission from the Parks and Recreation Department and the Alma or the Pioneer Arts Council to use loudspeakers and amplifiers during their evenings in the park musical events, which will be held each Tuesday evening from May 28, 2024 to August 27, 2024, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in accordance with section number 22-19 of the Alma Code of Organizes.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Okay, comments or questions?
Their first evening in the park is May 28th. And next week, we should have a list that will start to market from our new parks coordinator for some activities to get involved in. So that'll be next week.
Sounds like an ambitious schedule.
Yes.
Okay, questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the fellow reports by one resolution or any commissioner may remove any of the items within the section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Parks Committee, April 22, 2024 draft meeting minutes. The Zoning Board of Appeals, April 30, 2024 draft meeting minutes. The Alma District Fire Board, May 1st, 2024 draft meeting minutes. The Planning Commission, May 6, 2024 draft meeting minutes. The Alma Police Department, April 2024 report. The Alma Transit, April 2024 report. The Building Permits Report for March and April 2024. A Finance Report for April 24, 2024. And the City Manager's Newsletter. Your pleasure.
Move to receive 1 through 8.
Support. Motion support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Will now entertain a motion for the City Manager's Newsletter, number nine.
Move to receive, number nine.
Support. Motion support. Eric?
All right, we already talked about recreation programs, capital programs in the parks. As part of the Park Master Plan, we did hear loud and clear from the surveys to invest As part of the Park Master Plan, we did hear loud and clear from the surveys to invest in the assets that we currently have and improve those. So we've got some numbers around for, we'll start with Holiday Park. We have a basketball court out there and two tennis courts out that way. We had a contractor come out, take a look at both those courts, and kind of gave us some ideas of what we could do to keep what we have there as opposed to tearing out and building new. The basketball court is actually in good enough shape where we could invest, the estimated amount is invest $30,000, and that can be resurfaced and restripped for both basketball and for two regulation-sized pickleball courts. And what you would do for pickleball is provide temporary nets that people could borrow or rent to go out there and play pickleball on the court. So that does happen. That's what they do with the rec center at the college, they have some temporary nets that you can bring out. If not, then you can just strip it for basketball and use that for basketball. Next door, the tennis courts, they're kind of beyond repair. They did give us a, they said you could try to resurface them and do something with them, but in three years, you're just going to be, you're going to be right back to kind of where you're at. So if you went along with this option, we would strike the other one for just basketball and resurface that one, we'd be good for quite a long time for those. And then we'd basically be spending about another 150, you were taking Dave, correct? Another 150 to build some pickleball courts.
150 based on the numbers of the striping, the surfacing, plus replacing the surface.
It's about 150.
8,000.
For two.
Senior.
For pickleball courts there, you know, tennis courts don't seem to be, you know, used and that's in demand.
Yeah, we have a lot of them at the high school and colleges.
And the college is very generous in allowing the community to use those, and those have been resurfaced very recently. So that is something that we could look at doing. And then, then the other option is you just, we do nothing, but that's probably not the thing we want to do. We have budgeted some numbers to deal with some capital in some of the parks. Highland Park, Highland Park, which is the park adjacent to the south of the library. Some of the ideas that we have there to take care of some things, make it look a little nicer, aren't some high dollar amounts there. Basically, we'd take out all that sand that used to be the volleyball court area, seed that, make it a grass, grass area, make some improvements to the pavilion, to the, kind of the music backstage pavilion, bandstand, and then do some improvements to the basketball court, or the basketball hoop and the asphalt there to spruce that up. Not a big, not too big of a project, and we could probably do that fairly reasonably and do that, a lot of internal, internal staff to get that done. So if we'd like to move forward with that, we can get them scheduled and underway with that. I would recommend doing that, clean that up there, really clean that up. The former transportation building, looking down the road for possible train depot on the riverfront for passenger trail, train from Ann Arbor to Traverse City, and looking at the long-term availability of the transportation, what used to be the transportation building. Staff feels that we could look at basically carving out that building from that property down there, keep the public parking. We already talked about, we'll get some funding to demo the old Prospect Building, which is the one along the rail line. If the commission would like to proceed down that path, and the reason why I'm saying keep the parking lot is we'll, we'll need some parking eventually if we do have a train depot there too. Overfill parking if some other things do come online. Public parking makes things a lot easier to have happen. I'm dealing with some issues right now. We're going to have some great apartments coming online, mid-block in downtown, but it's all private parking behind, back behind there, and they're having a tough time coming to some agreements with the private ownership for parking there. I'd hate to sell off any property because the real value down on the riverfront is the property. And then we get held up by a private developer that just wants way too much for something or doesn't allow the public to use or people to use the parking down there. But what we could do is, you know, have a market analysis done of the, of the building itself. We got an estimate between 2,300 and 3,500 to do a market analysis study of what the building is worth. Go through, rezone it to a B1 Central Business District, zoning district, which is the downtown. Carve out that building from the parking lot so that can be used by the public, and then develop an easement agreement with that building so people have interest, egress for the building and the use of that parking.
Are you talking about the gym and autism center?
Yes, yep. Long-term, that building's probably got some value, even if the apartment, the riverfront does develop. But as we're trying to find ways to try, and we've talked about marketing, I don't have any extra money, other than the state of Michigan has said that once we're done with the master planning, they will put some money towards strategic planning, but nothing really toward marketing. And it would be nice if we actually had some dollars too to start putting some designs, you know, something that people could visually see what, what we'd like to see down there. If we had some money from that building, if it, you know, if it's sold, that we could use those funds for something along those lines, concept designs, and hiring something to help market that, that property to get it back under use. But long and short of it is, I think we've talked about getting, you know, what could we do there? But from beyond that, keeping the property, I think, is important, but we could also, I think it'd be important for someone, if they bought it, they wouldn't have the maintenance headache of having for parking. So there's some benefit, I think, both on both sides that we keep that. And I probably wouldn't have thought so much along that line, but just what's been going on, trying to find some parking spaces for that, for the 120, the superior block has been just, with the private hands, it makes it much harder to get things done. But it's one, if, if the commission's comfortable with that, moving forward, we're getting in-market analysis done of the building, start down that path and getting on the market eventually.
Market analysis is how much?
Between 2,300 and 3,500.
23 to 35.
Yeah. Because other than that, I don't know what price you'd put on it and.
Oh, yeah, you got to have a price there, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you just can't.
And if everyone's okay with that, we'll, we'll reach out and.
Well, I've been figuring that for years, so.
All right, well, we'll get started on that.
I don't think we're great landlords.
I, I don't like being a landlord. I really don't. I really don't.
Okay.
And then the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, this just came available, some funding, one-time funding, 300, 3.5 million from MDOT for spaces that are shared youth paths, public spaces, actually some transit-type uses. Where we're thinking that we'd like to put some, our application in, it's for projects that are quick-built, ready to be built. And we are right there, ready to build Charles Avenue connector from where it's just north of the rail trail, along Charles Avenue, comes down from the apartments. We got about 500 yards or so from there to the, to the rail trail to finish. This would be a perfect opportunity to do that, we close that in, the college building, the new track and field indoor facility there. The students need to get out there too, a place to walk. Plus, we're connecting the, which was originally built for, was the State for Office School, that we'll get back, finally connected, takes us into downtown. One of the caveats that came along with our SRF and Charles Avenue, we had to do an environmental analysis of the area and come to find out, Dave did give me some pictures that I put into your newsletter, that little area there just to the north of the rail trail, that is now considered a wetland, because there's certain types of grasses that are there. So we are not allowed now just to, what we had planned to do was put a culvert in so water could flow in and out, and just put concrete, continue the concrete sidewalk. Now that's a wetland, we cannot do that. That last 50, 50 feet, 50 yards.
About 50 feet.
50 feet. Has to be some sort of a boardwalk, so that's going to increase our costs.
Another bridge kind of thing.
Yeah, kind of, yeah, kind of like what's to the north of there, when he ties it to Warwick Drive. But this might be some good timing. This is exactly what they're asking for in that. The turnaround is a Smith-Test by June. There is not a requirement for local match for it. The grant is up to $200,000. We'll get more in-depth than that, but I don't think there's any points for us putting any match into the, into the grant. So whatever we're going to put in there will probably be for the maximum amount. So it is ready to build. We'll be, as soon as we get bids back, we'd be under construction for this project. So it's exactly what they're looking to have happen. So just wanted to let you know about that. We've already talked about the Colombarium, and then I did attend the Slipper, St. Louis, Ethica Pioneer Township Transportation Authority meeting. They will be looking to go out for their renewal, for their transportation millage during the August primary. They did vote to do that, so I just wanted to make this commission aware of that. And what they'll be asking for is what we currently have, which is the 0.9, 0.96 mils, which is the maximum we can levy with headwinds roll back. But the last two years, including the last year and this year, staff, we've only requested that the millage be at 0.8. So whatever we do, the Slipper Authority Board will match. But when they go out for the renewal, they'll be asking for that 0.96 renewal. And Michigan Avenue is open. I don't know if, for once, I told you, actually came to fruition in here. It opened up this morning about 9:30 or so. And then the last thing, just again, to congratulate Roger, has ordered the tartan for this year, and congratulate Curtis and Shayna on Young Professionals of the Year on the Young Professional Network. That is the first year of that award, so, so one of our staff receiving some recognition from the chair.
Okay. As far as the parks, when you talked about those, those projects, is there intention to request dollars from the county? They've got that.
We, we could do that.
That program is that they, we could beg for money from them.
Yep.
We can't for this particular project because they require it has to be a brand-new asset. It cannot be a rehab of an existing asset.
And that may change by the.
As of, as of the current requirements, unless new requirements change. We do plan on applying for a different project once it comes around. We are going to ask for money, but we can't for these particular projects unless they change the score.
Because we didn't fight for anything this round, did we?
No, we didn't.
Not this one.
But from what, some discussions I've had, they are looking at changing that particular requirement for things like.
Yeah, I still maintain that they should do it by formula, and we should just get 80% of our money back that the Elma contribution is. Be the same for all the municipalities that maintain their own parks. It makes a lot more sense. We can plan for things that way instead of.
Could have part of that.
Going out and begging.
Cemetery.
What's that?
Cemetery suffered in the park.
Well, cemetery is different than parks, yeah, so. But, you know, it's pretty hard to plan when you have to go to them to beg for the money all the time. And what they choose to fund or not fund is, you know, is kind of random.
Yeah.
I know when I talk to our county commissioners, I'd be sure to mention that every time. I would encourage everybody else, as you talk to our county commissioners, we do have three that have an interest in Elma now. I think each precinct has a different one. So that should be three votes on the county commission that if we can convince them of our message, perhaps they can change that, make it a formula base so that all of us, you know, not just Elma, but St. Louis, Ethica, Rockbridge, that maintain parks, you know, if we could plan for this and say, yeah, this is regular money, we're going to have so much money, put it in a plan, it makes a whole lot easier to do things, so. I guess I'll get off my soapbox.
And that's, you know, maybe if we still got.
It just seems to make a lot more sense to me than the way we do it.
And that's time we can discuss with them, you know, because we, gosh, we've got another four years, I believe, is still on that, that millage, so.
We could do a lot for you.
And, and I think it would be a big step, because the discussions they are having is to open it up to not just new, new assets.
Yeah, it does make any sense when everybody can't maintain, we can't afford to maintain what we've got, but yet they'll give you money to go build something new that we're not going to maintain for the bones.
Right.
It's senseless, in my opinion. But anyway, anybody else with comments or questions? With that, all those in favor, please say yes to receive the City Manager's Newsletter?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, we've received it. Thank you. Moving to new business, we are to consider a resolution to approve an agreement letter with 123.net for transfer of their existing Metro Permit to 123 Net Holdings LLC, and also to authorize the City Manager to execute the letter for extension.
Move to adopt.
Support.
For the Metro Act, it's required as long as they, we don't have a choice, other than, like I've talked to Dave and the Public Service Superintendent, if we have issues with these particular folks, they're all area, everything they does area. But if we have restoration of rights of way that aren't doing and then taken care of properly, we can keep track of those, and then we can make cases later when these come up for renewal or reach out to the state of Michigan and let them know that they are not following up on their end of the bargain of why the Metro Act is there, is to clear the red tape from the local side of things. But they're also required to make sure that, say, the terrace area, the right-ofways are replaced properly once they go in and dig it up or bore or something like that, so.
They seem to do a fair job of that, right?
For the most part, yeah. We have, you know, we do.
Problems.
We do, yeah. But these, these folks here in particular are all area wires.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Moving on to Commissioner's comments. Murray, would you like to start us off tonight?
Again, congratulations to Roger. That's awesome. Well deserved. And also, GCP had an incredible first weekend of Willy Wonka, sellout, a lot of new people to the community that came to see the show and getting great feedback from everybody. It was a great group effort and awesome people on the show, and it's just been a great weekend, and we have another sellout weekend this weekend, so. Doing great.
Good news.
Congratulations to the Elma High School class of 2024. They graduate Thursday. So, kind of early, in my opinion. We went till the end, or second of January. Sorry, that's 35 years ago. It's all good.
That's gonna be you.
I know. No, it was just the weekend for Memorial Day.
You can put it for a two-week refund if you want.
I know. But this last change is 35 years since I was there. That's about it. Oh, keep on a beautiful Saturday from 9 to noon. If you'd like to help clean up that area, we're looking for volunteers, meet in front of the hardware store, and if you can work a half hour to three hours, we'd appreciate it. There's lots to clean up before the Highland Festival.
True.
Yeah, congratulations to Gresham County Players. It's a spectacular show down there that they've done. The amount of work that goes into that by so many people behind the scenes, it's pretty incredible, the commitment from the community to kind of keep that going. It's, it's amazing, so. I would say go get tickets, but as we said, it's sold out again, so find somebody with tickets and be their friend.
I don't think anybody's giving them up. Roger, you can represent.
Hi, do you have anything else to do, to say? No, thank you.
Okay. Well, I had my congratulations to Shayna and Curtis, and your recipients of the first annual award there, and Roger, of course, you.
Thank you.
Thanks to that. And then congratulations again to the players. It's not surprising, it's just another sellout performance that they've got. It's, it's always amazing, the talent that's, they dig up down there. I think we've got Chuck the Wog going on. I was in the paper again this morning, so if you've got any artistic ability, it's a free event, anybody just, they'll give you the chalk, they'll give you the sealant stuff, you just go down and draw a picture on the sidewalk.
Can they give me the talent?
They give you the, I don't know. They didn't have any for me, so perhaps there's some down there for you, but. It's a neat project, and it's amazing how long some of those things last, and, you know, it's, months later, you can still see outlines of things, so it's cool.
Everybody come home for Highland Festival.
Yeah, Highland Festival, we're going to have one of those, yeah.
I'd like to add the congratulations to Curtis, too. I meant to say that, that's awesome. Well deserved.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? Les, once again, we're looking to you.
Not yet.
Welcome back. Welcome back to town. Glad to see you. Glad everything's safe. So with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
No, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I move, we have to go. I move we go into a closed session.
Forget about that. Did we have support?
Yeah.
Okay. This doesn't have to be a roll call now?